Good afternoon. It's three o'clock on the twentieth of May, two thousand twenty-five. This is a meeting of the Uentha County Commission. We are in the Commission Chambers in rural Utah. We'll start with a prayer by Mr. Mike Wilkins, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Wendy Long.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this day, Father, we thank thee for the moisture thou has blessed our lands with. We ask that continue to bless our lands with the moisture that we need for the summer, for our crops and our gardens and our hayfields. We ask, we thank thee very much for this community we live in. We're thankful for our first responders and law enforcement and our military that's protecting our freedoms. Father, we ask that thou be with these commissioners this day as they conduct this public meeting, that they'll do it in a manner pleasing unto thee. We say these things now in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Can you stand before me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. A little housekeeping, if you haven't, please, before you leave, sign in on the register. If you have your electronic device, please put it on silent or turn it off so we don't get interrupted. We do have a change to the agenda. We're gonna swap fifteen and fourteen, so property funding will go before Ashley Gorgesman. Okay, our first order is gonna be approval of minutes, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, May seventh, twenty twenty-five, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes as presented, or as printed, or I've reviewed them, and they look good.
There were few clerical corrections that I already gave to tie, but so I agree.
Okay, any other questions, discussions, comments? Okay, let's go for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Wilkins, approve of the warrants?
Okay, Commissioners, I have warrants from May fifteenth in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. A few of them in here that was out of the ordinary, as we had our U-Bag homeless contribution to them of twenty thousand nine ninety-seven, and we also paid the entertainment for the county fair that was approved a week ago or two for thirty-one thousand. Other than that, that's the normal bills.
Just May fifteenth, all today?
Yes.
Okay, go for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented by Clerk Auditor Wilkins.
Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All aye. Any tax matters?
Yes, we do. Commissioners, we do have some tax matters today. We have some order of approvals from the State Tax Commission on appeal number two-four dash one-six-zero-three, serial number is fifty zero-one-one-four-one-six-eight. This one here, Commissioners, we are adding eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents. This one they actually increased the value on. It is on a disposal pond owned by RN Industries, so we need approval there to add an additional eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and two cents.
Okay, call for a motion.
Do I need to state that? I didn't get it all wrote down, or can I? Okay, I make a motion that we approve this tax matter as presented by Mike Wilkins.
Any discussion? Okay, what yours is for, Mike?
That was for the tax year twenty twenty-four.
If I may, then, your motion is to accept the increased tax rate of just over eight hundred?
Right, to charge an additional eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and two cents on this particular property.
So that would be clear, yes.
He provided us that information earlier, but it's on my desk, so. It's been reviewed. Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one, Commissioner, is appeal number twenty-four dash sixteen oh five. This is property owned by Dalbo Inc. This one was reduced in value. This one here, we need to abate. This one, they did not pay the property taxes, so we're not doing a refund. So we're doing, we will be doing an abatement. They have paid what is owed, so we need to abate at this time on serial number fifty dash, or zero-one-one dash four-one-seven-zero in the amount of seven thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents to be abated.
Okay, let's go for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we abate these taxes as presented by Mike Wilkins.
Any discussion? Is this also twenty-four, Mike?
Correct.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, sir? Okay. Next, we will go for a motion to go to recess for the Municipal Building Authority.
I'll make a motion that we recess into Municipal Building Authority.
Now, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I am Commissioner Norton, and I am the Chair of the Municipal Building Authority, so I will take the agenda from here, well, for a second. We will, we are going to be having a public hearing because UN County MBA is submitting a small planning grant application to the Permanent Community Impact Fund Board, commonly referred to as the CIB, to develop a comprehensive, well, two comprehensive master plans for the Buckskin Hills Complex and the Western Park. The estimated project cost is seventy thousand dollars for each plan. We are requesting thirty-five thousand dollars on each plan and in, from the CIB, and according to the requirements, UN County will need to provide a fifty percent match, so we will be matching thirty-five thousand dollars as well to meet those funding guidelines. The financial impact to the public, it's important to emphasize that these projects do not involve any new property taxes, special assessments, or user fees. The thirty-five thousand dollars in requested CIB funds for each plan would be used solely for planning purposes. Should future development or construction be proposed, those efforts would undergo a separate approval process. As far as the CIB financing, the CIB may approve full or partial funding. If full funding is not awarded, UN County will adjust the project scopes accordingly, potentially narrowing the scope, shortening the plan, or completing initial phases and expanding later as additional funds become available. So the first one will be the Buckskin Hills, and this plan will be to provide a strategic, fiscally responsible roadmap for this multi-use regional recreation facility. It will assess current facilities such as the dragway, mountain bike, and OHV trails, motocross track, tubing hill, campgrounds, Speedway, and shooting complex. Evaluate underutilized areas, analyze economic impacts, and engage stakeholders, user groups, and the public. Planned improvements include signage, lighting, restroom of facilities, bleachers, and new amenities. The consultant will develop prioritized projects, cost estimates, and a phased implementation plan. So now I would like to open the public hearing for the Buckskin Hills Master Plan. If there was anyone that would like to comment, if you would please come to the microphone and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, we will close that public hearing on the Buckskin Hills Master Plan. Now we'll switch over to the scope of work for the Western Park. This complex, they will be assessing the existing facilities, identifying opportunities for modernization, and engaging the community to set priorities. Identifying opportunities, oh, excuse me, a third-party consultant will evaluate key areas such as the arenas, amphitheater, convention center, ice rink, racetrack, parking, and infrastructure. So again, I would invite any of the public to come forward if they have any questions or comments regarding the Western Park Master Plan application. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And unless there's anything else, I will adjourn the MBA to move. Oh, I guess I do have to do one more thing, excuse me. Thanks, John. I will ask for approval to move forward with the permanent Community Impact Board applications as stated.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we do proceed with the request for funds from the CIB Board for the Buckskin Hills Master Plan and Western Park Master Plan, as you have presented.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I would call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now I will adjourn the MBA and reconvene into the Commission meeting.
All right, we're back in the Commission meeting. Number eight's gonna be Trina, awarding request for proposals. Purchase native asphalt oil sands.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Road Department is seeking to purchase up to eight thousand tons of native asphalt oil sands for the upcoming road maintenance and construction projects. So we did a request for proposal, and it was issued as a sealed bid solicitation. Upon the bid opening date, one fully responsive proposal was received from Valcor. In adherence to standard procurement procedures, an evaluation committee was convened to thoroughly review this submission. The committee evaluation confirmed that the single proposal did meet all of the mandatory and minimum requirements as outlined in the, hey, thanks, Mike, for taking care of me. The minimum requirements as outlined in the RFP. So the price per ton is gonna be twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Therefore, the scoring committee recommends awarding the proposal to Valcor. I am seeking the Commission's approval for two actions. The first to award proposal to, the proposal to Valcor, and the second to approve entering into a contract that reflects this scope. If both are approved, I will work with Lauren to finalize the contract and secure the Commission's signature.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract. Do I need to state that you see twenty-five dash seven purchase of native asphalt as presented by Trina Gardner?
To Valcor. What's that? To Valcor Corporation.
To Valcor Corporation.
Okay, any questions, comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you get the next one, too, Trina.
Perfect. All right, for the next one, in March, the Purchasing Department issued a request for proposal for the Rock Point Cemetery Expansion Project. The Selection Committee reviewed the proposal and recommended that Allred Landscaping received the award, which was approved in the Commission on April first. Since that time, we've been working with Allred Landscaping and Lauren Anderson's office to finalize a contract that fully captures the scope of work that was outlined in the RFP. Today, I'm here to request a formal approval for the contract between Uentha County and Allred Landscaping so the project can move forward. Thanks.
Okay, go for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the contract or service agreement with Allred Landscaping in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars for the landscaping work on the Rock Point Cemetery, as presented.
Any questions or comments? Did we go out for an RFP on this?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Back in March.
And this is the only one that it?
No, this is the one that had two, but the first stubs and stubs did not meet all the mandatory minimum requirements.
Anything else? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along, Uentha County Criminal Justice Service Contract Renewal, two thousand twenty-six, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson. I was asked to cover this by Ms. Charmaine Gold. What this is, is the Utah Commission on Criminal and Justice, Juvenile Justice, will award Uentha County a grant of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year starting July first through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. We are currently operating under, we received a grant from them also that will expire in June. This is to continue with work for pre-trial services, drug court, drug testing, and probation, court probation. As a little background, a study was done in twenty twenty-two with persons who commit crimes in Uentha County, and they found that there's about a fifty percent recidivism rate of persons who commit crimes after they've committed crimes. About half of those people commit crimes, actually, a little more than half of those people commit crimes while awaiting for their crimes to be, for their previous charges to be adjudicated. This is a way that we can help hopefully stop that with this grant and the things that it would go for. This grant will pay for personnel, the benefits, the equipment, supplies, and operating requirements, and training for the county employees who handle this. So I, there is not a contract, the Commission did sign an application. Once that is approved by the UCCJJ, they will send that application with a letter saying we have been given that grant monies. When we get that, that is when, that will be the contract. So I would just submit this for approval.
Okay, any, call for a motion?
First, can I ask, did you say four hundred thousand?
Four hundred and fifty thousand, correct.
Four hundred and fifty thousand, and is this in addition to the funding that the pre-trial program has already received, or is this a separate?
So it's my understanding that money they've received will end this year, will end in a few weeks in June, and this will be a renewal of that.
Okay, I was under the understanding that the money we had received for that was ongoing funding.
That's what this is, is ongoing.
I think we have to do something every year.
Every year, we just have to reapprove?
That's correct.
All right, and it was the same amount last year?
I'm not sure how much it was.
I thought it was six hundred and something.
We ended up with six hundred last year.
Okay, so it's the last thing.
Okay. So this is good till, what, the end of June next year?
Correct, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, well, then with that, I would make a motion that we approve, I guess what you'd say, the contract renewal, as has been presented.
I think that sounds good.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next one is road abatement.
So I don't know if I missed anything, but items eleven and twelve, we were gonna see if those could be tabled. We haven't heard back from our surveyor yet. He was gonna go out there and check out the property lines and make sure that the road didn't run through BLM land, and he hasn't had a chance to do that yet, so.
Okay, call for a motion?
I think, did we have a motion to table those, or can the Chair table those? Lauren?
You made me last time.
Does he have, do we need to have a motion, or can he just table those items?
I, I can't remember exactly, but I think that the smoothest way would be to table it, or just call a vote.
Have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I would make a motion then that we table items number eleven and number twelve.
And I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one will be a public hearing on road vacation requests. We will open for a public hearing once Ms. Nyberg presents what we're talking about here.
Okay, I'll find it on the map here. Okay, so this was, is a request. Lost my picture. Is it still on this one? Okay, so this is a request for a vacation of a Class B road, sixty-five hundred west. This is in Dryport Canyon. And the request was made by Gala and Kenny Morris. The road is this one right here, sixty-five hundred west. It gives frontage to six properties. Four of them are owned by the Morris's, and then this little corner here is owned by Jeff and Kayleen Ellis. And then it ends on property owned by Nathan and Katrine Myers. The application was made and was noticed on state and county websites, and letters were sent out to all property owners. The property owners who signed the application were the Morris's and the Ellis's. At the time of the application, the Morris's indicated that they weren't able to get ahold of the Myers. And that's, again, this property where the road ends. They said that they believe they're out of the country, but that they wouldn't object to the vacation, the road vacation. We've since received an email from Katrine Myers stating that they are against the road vacation. She did send an email. I don't know if you want me to read that email. I think you, all the Commissioners have received it, but do you want me to read it in?
Please do, yes. Please read it in the record.
Okay. So, "To whom it may concern, in November of last year, Mrs. Morris approached me, Katrine Myers, requesting that I sign the county form to vacate sixty-five hundred west. Because of a history of tense relationships concerning the road, I politely made it clear that I would not sign the form. There are only two more, the two Morris families and us who share the lane. I hope, in, sorry, I hoped that keeping the road a county designation would keep the peace between us as neighbors. Unfortunately, I believe it was in retaliation that the next morning Kenny Morris moved a historical fence line and prompted a boundary dispute between us. Kenny and Gala Morris have represented that we would not be opposed to the vacation and that they were unable to reach us. They have been made aware of our position regarding the road vacation multiple times now, first in November and then afterwards during the boundary dispute. Additionally, the Morris's have known how to reach us as we've received texts from them regarding the neighborhood pipeline. I believe the claim that we would not be opposed and that they could not get in touch with us is disingenuous at best. The road and its designation as a county road is of critical relevance to the boundary dispute and would constitute interference with the status quo if that were to change. Additionally, and most importantly, we would be irreparably harmed if Uentha County were to vacate sixty-five hundred west. We are currently in the process of permitting an ADU on our property, and this vacation would prevent the guest house from ever becoming legal on our lot. We would become legal, non-conforming lot, and only one single-family dwelling would be with the understanding, sorry, be permissible. The vacation of the road would change that, as I understand it. This is unacceptable. I can only hope the Morris's did not understand the implications of road vacation to our property value. We certainly did not until last week. As it is, I hope they can understand our position. The concerns that the Morris's have about the lane being designated county are many. The merits or lack thereof of their complaint are not time-sensitive, whereas the designation of sixty-five hundred west as a private road and what that would do to our property value absolutely is. I do not believe they would be harmed by delaying this decision for another time until our guest house is permitted. I'm not asking for a decision to be made about the road unless that decision is not to vacate it, considering the circumstances under which the request was brought forth. I'm only asking that Uentha County understand the sensitive nature of the vacation request and its impact on these two fronts, the boundary dispute and our ADU permitting process, and postpone the deliberation for a later date. Sincerely, Katrine." So that's just some new information that we received in the last week.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We will not be making a decision one way or the other today. We're just gathering information. So if someone would like to come forward and speak, please do. Come to the microphone, state your name, and feel free, we have one or two.
I'm Gala Morris. I'm a property owner. As far as contacting Katrina, I cannot. The only way I can contact her The only way I can contact her is I'm the Secretary of Dry Fork Irrigation, to begin with. I did contact her husband Nathan and, to pay their water assessment. That is the only way I contact her. In retaliation on sixty-five hundred west, it is private all the way around. They moved in the middle of the night, the last weekend in February at eight o'clock. That is the last time we have seen them. They have rented out their house. We have been told by many, um, with her Airbnb, she did not get a building permit. She is not legal. I'm sure you're all aware of that. And, um, I have been told by many, because of the situation and what really brought this about, was she tried to lay her, uh, sewer lines basically on our property. And we have asked and asked and asked her many times to slow down in our lane. She has rented out the house at this point. The renters are wonderful people. They go slow. We have grandkids in the lane that walk back and forth. We have clocked her at thirty miles an hour before. It's a private driveway. This was done by Dale, uh, by Dale Peterson years ago and Ray Merkley in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. There was no signatures. I did not own the ground at the time, but I lived there. Virginia and Morgan Hall owned the ground. And, um, he very crookedly, in my opinion, made this a county road that should have never been. He did not go to my aunt and uncle that owned the property. Between him and Mr. Peterson, they created this deed that made it a county road. To me, that is not right, but that's my opinion. There's a lot to this, I granted. She does have a right of way. I don't see what her beef is. She has a right of way to her property through our property. We have no problem with that. But with her living in Puerto Rico, to the last of our, uh, knowledge, there was no way to contact her to get papers signed. That is my, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
So I really feel like with the way it was done, and they do have a right of way, that there should be no problem in releasing this county road that the county has never maintained. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Morris, may, may I just ask a, a quick question? I, I, I've met with you a couple times, and you have provided a written easement for the property, the Myers property, correct?
Yes.
So we talked about a right of way. There is a written.
There is a written one, and it, there is one on their deed.
It's recorded and everything, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah, it is recorded.
Anyone else on that property? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to the next property.
And I did want to, just on this property, um, say it does not access public lands at all. It's only private properties. And we do have a copy of that easement for the Myers on the property. So the next one is an application, um, to vacate Class D roads, zero-three-zero-five-oh-one, zero-three-zero-five-oh-two, and Two Ranch Road, on private land owned by Two Ranch LLC. And I'll go to that. Row, oh. Okay, I'm gonna have trouble finding it. Sit up lower. Sorry. Oh, I think I see it. No? Okay, so this property. Okay, so the roads that they're looking at vacating here, it's just this road here, and then up through to this yellow line, and then this road here. So this is a Class D county road. It has been posted, or has been noticed, uh, on county and state websites for the public hearing. A request for review was sent to UDOT, and the response that we got from them was that because we were holding the public hearing after May seventh, which is the effective date of the new law, that, um, this isn't something that we could make a decision on quite yet. Um, the applicant is talking to the state legislature about trying to clarify exactly what that effective date meant. We were under the impression, if they turned in their application before May seventh, that they would, we'd be able to make this decision without going through the new process. UDOT is saying that that's not the case, so, um, just, we don't know for sure how, which way that's gonna go, so we wanted to have the public hearing for, since we've already, um, noticed it. That way we don't have to go through the notice process again. So these are, again, Class D county roads, um, on private land. The property is surrounded, um, by public lands. On the north, there is the monument, I believe. Let me turn on my. Okay, so this is the private land here. Um, we've got BLM in the yellow and then state lands. And the monument lands up here in the dark yellow. Um, this road here through the property would be left open to access through. Um, the property, if they vacated these roads, uh, you would still be able to access this road up to the top by going down from the south. It's kind of a roundabout way. So they can still, uh, access that road from the south, coming up this way. There is possibly a second option here that we're looking into right now. The applicant is still looking into trying to find some records. Right now, this area next to the road is owned by the monument. And so if they have that right of way, that's not necessarily a way that we could claim as a county right of way. So the application was complete and notices were sent, um, and letters were sent to the property that the road's on, and now we just need to have the public hearing.
I have a question, Deanna, if I can share.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, the little part up by, it looks like a building or something up there, then.
Here?
Yes. That part that kind of forms an N or a U that goes up right there and hits the yellow line, but then comes back over by the white, yes. Is that part of what's asking to be vacated?
No.
No, just from the yellow line going east?
Yes.
Okay.
So this would be left open to go up and around. This red is a private, so the county would go up and around. I believe this area was just, um, it not, I don't know if it's impassable, or I think it's swampy or something like that. But yeah, it looks like that was possibly where the county road was, and now they've rerouted up and around.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Oh, okay. So up north here, um, and maybe I ought to turn off the. Okay, so it goes north and it hits this Rupel Point Road, um, and then extends to the west and kind of ends at a, there's a cliff here. There's not really a road on the ground there. That's more of a hiking trail. In fact, I think it is on the hiking trail maps. Um, but there's no, nothing on the ground as far as where you can tell that there used to be a road, was ever traveled. According to the applicant, it's been since, I think he said the fifties, that he knows of that anyone's ever been up there, so. Is that good, or is there something else specifically you wanted me to show up there? Right. So he'll leave that open, so you can still access there like you can today.
Okay. Anyone else have any input, please?
Commissioner, may I ask a question? Deanna, did you receive any comments back from the monument or from SITLA, the lands that surround?
No, so, let's see, who did, someone, someone, um, wrote us back for clarifica, clarification is all, but the, oh, sorry, no, that was a different application. So we haven't received any information back. We did send letters out, and, uh, there was no reply from SITLA or from the monument or BLM.
So you'll need to come up to the microphone, please.
I'll trade your spots here.
Them roads don't go onto the SITLA, on the state land.
They just go into the monument?
The, the ones that are being vaca, requested as vacated, the other ones, there's other ones that's on SITLA and that are Class D roads and whatnot, and even across our private too, on one of the chews, so.
Okay, what, what's your first name, sir?
Alan.
Alan Chu. Okay, Alan, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, see no one else? We will close the public comment on this then. Okay, this is where we swapped a little bit. Travis?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Campbell with Economic Development. I'm presenting a, a cooperative funding agreement sent to the county, uh, on behalf of the Utah Education and Outdoor Access Foundation, or because that's a mouthful, Access Utah. So Access Utah is a, a nonprofit organization that received a state appropriation to develop and install Via Ferrata routes in Utah. Their, their funding has been used to, for the installation of the, the Via Ferrata route in Ashley Gorge, as well as part of the, the match for the Utah Outdoor Recreation Grants the, the county has received. To ensure they are good stewards of the funding that Access Utah received, they have provided the, the funding agreement to, uh, to you all for, for approval. Similar to the, the contracts the county has signed, um, with the Outdoor Recreation Grant, the intent of this agreement is to ensure the, the public funds are, are utilized appropriately and that the, the features that we've acquired with the funding are, are well-maintained and accessible to the, to the public. So again, similar to those outdoor rec grants, the, the term of this agreement, once signed and executed, is effective for ten years. The, uh, the agreement would ensure the, the project remains open to the general public, reasonably maintained and, uh, with regular inspections and repairs, and operated in line with the intended uses of the, the, and purposes of the term. So if at any point, according to this, in those, those ten years, the county elects to permanently close or repurpose or, um, otherwise restrict the, the general public's access to the, the features, the county would repay all the funds provided by Access Utah within ninety days. So like many of our agreements, this was, uh, approved by the, the Attorney's Office, and I'm here to request, um, if you have any questions for me, or request your, um, approval on the, the funding agreement.
Okay, call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the cooperative funding agreement with Access Utah for the Via Ferrata as presented by Travis Campbell.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Travis, this is the money that we've already committed for the construction thus far?
Yeah, this is the, a lot of this funding was used for the, the installation thus far. And then there's still work to be done to, to complete the route, but, but yes, and for the match for the, the grants we've received.
I guess that just to my question is, we've pretty much committed and used it regardless?
Yes.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. We have Mr. Kazir for Ashley Gorge Easement Agreement between UNT County, Vernal City, Ashley Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District. Matt?
Uh, yeah, good afternoon. Um, so we presented this at the work session. Uh, there were two changes that the, uh, county made after we reviewed it, um, after our meeting with, uh, Vernal City and a representative of Ashley Valley. And those two changes were adding that it was a non-exclusive easement, which was discussed in the meeting, but it wasn't actually in the document. And then adding that the Vernal City and Ashley Valley would allow the county to use the bridge for, um, administrative purposes. And that we indemnified them as well, so.
And it is a pedestrian bridge only?
Yes, it's a pedestrian bridge. It's up there between, it crosses the creek between the DeSander and the Spring House, sorry, and the Spring House, so. In talking with, um, Mike Carrington with Vernal City, um, he said ninety days was plenty of time for the city to be able to get it approved. Um, I did talk with Ryan Goodrich after the meeting last week. Um, he'd asked for a hundred and eighty days to get it approved through his board, so. Um, those are kind of the timelines that they gave, I guess, each of the groups, so. Um, but I, I would like a timeline on it though, just so that it's not out there. So that it's not out there hanging out in the open, you know, for years down the road or something.
Okay, and they've had this, both entities have had this for a few months already. Is that correct?
Correct, and it was dra, actually drafted by Vernal City.
Okay, call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Ashley Gorge Easement Agreement as presented by Matt Kazir with a ninety-day request for answer, or whatever you want to call that request for.
Well, for them to approve it.
Request, yes.
Any questions or comments from this? Okay, I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Uh, we'll get that sent over then to both entities and let them know. The next one?
Miss Rules, sixteen?
Sorry, so, um, I did want to show this again just because it was presented at the work session, but there were a couple of changes discussed, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear what was being changed. So in red here, we had talked about, um, adding item number D. Those that are under the influence of drugs or alcohol or impaired in some other way shall not use the Via Ferrata. And then adding to the equipment, uh, closed-toe shoes. Be required. And then there were just some grammatical things that, uh, the Attorney's Office wanted taken out. So we just removed, um, and easy to manage in, in L here, in L here. Um, so now it will just state faster parties to pass at appropriate locations along the route. Then there's one last change down here in R. The sentence got a little bit long, so, um, Lauren crafted it so it was shorter. But it s, it says professional guides for the Via Ferrata that have been permitted by UNT County. And their clients shall follow all the rules and regulations for the Ashley Gorge property and this executive order, so. Um, those are the changes there. Then we fix the date. And then, obviously, the date would change if it's not approved today as well, so.
Okay.
Are you just going to add an S to drugs? I noticed you said influence of drugs and alcohol. It just says drug.
Oh, um, you can do that.
Okay.
Call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the Via Ferrata rules as presented with the changes as presented. as presented with the changes as presented.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
Some. I think this was a very good meeting. It was well-attended. Lots of people spoke up, and their opinion was given. I thought it was very, very productive. I personally would like to hold off on approving these rules until we actually have the Via Ferrata completed. So with that, I would ask to amend the motion to table this until future date when the Via Ferrata is completed.
Can I chime in a little bit on it? Just to give you a reason why we're asking for them now? We've got to get the signage and stuff done up. And so once the rules are adopted, we can get those signs drawn up and created. That's gonna take some time, and so that's why we're doing it now, so that we can be ready as the construction gets done.
And the timeframe on the construction here is about eight weeks?
Yeah, they're saying middle of July, middle toward July, so...
And we're, but we're not gonna post the signs until we're ready to open. That's my concern, is that we, if we post the signs, that we're gonna just, it's gonna be inflammatory, and we'll have people reading the signs and thinking it's a go.
Yeah, no, we won't. The signs will be the last thing to go up for construction. And we're not gonna go post the signs before, while they're doing the construction of it. Part of the contract that Access Utah has is a kiosk and things like that for signage. And so that, those are gonna be the last things that they do. They'll finish the route first, and then we'll get the signs.
Build the kiosk, post signs.
Before we open it. But to get the signs created, there's some lag time there of several weeks, so...
I guess with that, I can rescind my, my, what do they do?
Amendment.
Amendment.
If that's the case, then we'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one is Via Ferrata Guide Rules.
Okay, yeah, there was just a small change on this one. It's the same as what was changed on the last one. Just cleaning up that sentence. Just making sure that guides and their clients are following the rules of both the property and the Via Ferrata, so... That's the only change that was talked about, and again, the date. We would like this one approved now so that we can start working on the application process for the guides, and we can get that going so that those that want to guide can get their applications submitted. We can get those processed so they can be ready to guide when it is opened.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Via Ferrata Guide Rules as presented by Matt Kazer.
Any discussion or comment? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next one on the line is board appointments.
I do have some. As many of you have heard, we have been able to receive a grant from the state for economic, from the Economic Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. And with that grant, they would like us to have a board that is an advisory board to the commission regarding the annual rural county grant program. And it also helps us with our economic efforts in the community, development efforts. So I wanted to clarify who is on the board right now and who is being reappointed to the board. We are adding a new member. So I will start with the members that are on the board currently, and their term will not expire till 2026. The December 31st, is that correct, of 2026? There is Sidney Millet. She is a member representing the municipality representatives, which is small business. Heather Lowry is a workforce development representative. She works with UB Tech and education. Mike Davis is a municipality representative from Naples. Todd Massey is a member of the county public, large business and education. Nate Zillis represents municipality in the Ballard area. Now, the members that we are reappointing, their terms will expire at the end of 2028. They are Randy Bell. He represents workforce development, Division of Workforce Services. Quinn Benyon, municipality representative for Vernal. Calleen Gamble, private sector representative, real estate. Joel Brown, a member of county public, nonprofit. David Brinkerhoff, private sector representative, mining. And a new appointment is Alan Olive. He is the private sector representative for healthcare. He's with Ashley Regional. And then Travis Campbell will also be serving for the county representative, economic development. There are 11 members on this board, and they are an advisory board to the county commission.
Okay.
I think we need a motion, though, to approve that.
With that, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this list of board members as presented by Commissioner Norton.
Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that the only board you had?
That's the only one I have, yes.
Does anyone like to make a public comment? Okay. Public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county may or may not respond to comments or answering questions. If we don't have the answer, we'll find out and get back to you for sure. Comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone's available. Come to the microphone, state their name for the record. Please be respectful. Please do not interrupt. Please wait your turn. A total of 15 minutes will be allocated for the public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comment. When you hear the alarm go off, that'll mean you're done. Like to make comment, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Keith Despain. I'm the Public Works Director for Vernal City. Just wanted to make a comment on the agreement that was heard in one of the earlier items on the agenda. With the draft that the city submitted to the commission for consideration was given from the city, and then later the county added the portion about the bridge access. And that's where my comment revolves around. The bridge access has always been up there for the use of the maintenance of the utilities, water and sewer, or the water facilities that we have up there. And so it's a little different for us as the water providers to think about other people accessing it. I think in the language, what was said was administrative access. Just curious what that means, and you know, these are probably discussions that can happen offline, but what exactly kind of access are we talking about? And then also just wanted to note that the city council will be looking at the same document shortly, well within the 90 days that you requested, and will be in touch, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. It's your chance. Going once, going twice. I can only give it to Commissioner Willis LaFever.
Adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you, sir.